Order please.
Mayor Rowland Dyke.
Here.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Here.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Mertz.
Here.
City Administrator James Fenchman.
Here.
Thank you, Terry. Next item on the agenda, you have a copy of the minutes of previous meeting in your package. If you had a chance to take a look at those, we will entertain a motion to approve as presented. If there are no questions, additions, or deletions.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the board to approve the minutes of previous meeting. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
Nays have like aye. Hearing none. Motion carries. Next acclamation, uh, next item is proclamations and a recognition of citizens by the mayor or board of Alderman. I've just been advised by the city attorney that we just met some, I just met Justin Norton. Norton, would you stand up? He's the new director of Newport Grammar School. Welcome.
Thank you for being here.
Next item, it will be communications with my city administrator, Mr. James Fenchman.
Thank you, Mayor. My presentation tonight will be short and sweet. I'm with you. I second that motion.
Get the clock out, Terry.
The only issue I have to bring the attention of the board tonight is a change in policy at the county landfill. Prior to this month, the landfill had taken tires that we had brought that had been discarded. Uh, we allowed, we would pick up up to eight tires at a residence at a time and dispose of those at the landfill. Uh, they didn't go into the landfill, they, they were actually hauled off, but they had a spot up there that they would put them until they had enough for a load to go to wherever they take them. I really don't know where they took, take them to. But we took a load up there Friday and they charged us to drop them off. And so, uh, when that came to my attention, I stopped tire pickup because we have no monies budgeted to pay for that. And without monies budgeted to pay for it, I can't, I can't do anything. I don't have money to budget it for it. And you guys set the budget. So, um, what I would like for you to do, I don't have it on the agenda, but I just would like after the meeting, um, or tomorrow, when you have time, some input from y'all on how you want to proceed with it. Uh, do you want to reinstate picking up tires and in September, budget monies to pay for it? Or do you want to just discontinue the practice? They, we did check to make sure that that policy affected everyone, that it was enforced equally to the public to, as it was to us. And it is. If, if an individual takes a tire to the county to dispose of it, they have to pay a fee. So, um, so it is being done universally. It's not just being done to us because if it, if that had been the case, I was going to protest that. But it is being done to everyone. But if we want, if we want to do it, we're going to have to pay to dump them up there. And, um, we do currently, we do about 60 or so a month on average. But now Friday, we picked up 14 in one day and we took those 14 up there. And...
What's the count?
It's, uh, the ones we took, we took 14 up there and it was $33. But that was, they, they weighed ours 400 pounds. For an individual, if you take a tire, it's $3 to drop off one per, like an individual with three tires, four tires, it's $3 per tire. But for us, because we take them in bulk, it's by weight. So I would guess it averages out to the same thing. You would think, I haven't done the math, but it was $33 for us Friday. Now, that doesn't sound like a lot, but it adds up, you know, over the course of a year. That was one day.
I know you probably don't know the answer to this, but is that many people changes their own tires?
Well, I think that's, and that's a good point, Mr. Reagan. I, you know, I'm surprised by how many we pick up. I would have thought it was a smaller number because when, like when I get my tires changed, and I'm sure it's the same for everyone, you know, there's a fee that the, uh, that your service provider charges you for the tire disposal. And so, of course, you always have the option to say, I want to take them with me. And evident, and evidently people take them home with them because not a lot of people have the, the mechanism to change a tire. You know, you can work, you can change your oil at home and a lot of people can change their brakes, but man, changing the tires is a different story. You've got to have a way to break it down and you can't do that with a, you know, I've done it with a bicycle, but doing it on a vehicle is a different story. So I, I don't, you know, but, but we do have, you know, like I said, we have 60 or so a month is what the number I was given by our staff that on average of what we take in. And so, uh, one fear that I would have is if they, now that they've started charging at the landfill is that they would, could be dumped off on us. If we're, if we're picking them up and hauling them and paying for them, I could see us becoming a dumping ground in town for folks that don't want to go up there and pay that knowing that we will. So, I don't know, but y'all can, y'all can let me know after the meeting, uh, and we, if you all want to do that, we'll put it, because we'll be doing a budget amendment before long and we'll put it in the budget, in the budget amendment and we'll put money in the budget to do it. But y'all can let me know about that after the meeting or tomorrow or something. I didn't, I didn't, without getting, it just happened Friday, so I hadn't had a lot of time to talk to y'all or anything and it was, the agendas had already gone out. So, um, I didn't want to ask to put it on the agenda unless you all, and I, you know, and we can do it through a budget amendment, so. But that's all I've got, Mayor. Thank you.
Have they got the record of the number last year, maybe that we done?
No.
Okay.
No, because we've not been tracking it. But I just asked for a rough estimate on how many we've been taking up there a month and they said around 60. But no, we don't, we've not tracked that, you know, it's just like with our garbage, we don't track, you know, how many pounds or whatever, you know, we don't, we, we don't break it down into that kind of detail.
Any other, any other questions?
I'm not a fan of social media, but what do you think about some sort of a survey? Maybe on Facebook, just to get an indication of how many city residents are concerned about something like that?
Our social media expert.
What am I getting signed up for here? We can do Survey Monkey, yeah, put it out there. We did it for the Parks and Rec and we've done it for a couple of things. It's expensive and, yeah, we put it out there promoted and have something next month so that you've got us something quantifiable in front of you. Be no problem.
Is there any way to separate city from county response on that?
Um, you just have to rely on people's, people being honest about what they represent or they have to do, right?
You didn't ask the question, were you a city resident?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that'd be the only way is just put a question there so that anybody can take it and we can turn that data over to, you know, Mayor Mathis and maybe they can do something with it, but otherwise it'd just be asking, asking it and then it, you know, the survey would take you one way or the other and they wouldn't get the results based on that.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, James.
Thank you. That's all we got.
Next item is appointment of boards, commissions, and committees, of which I don't know any. Uh, next item is reports from committees, members of council, and other officers. Does the board have any reports, recommendations? Okay. Can we move on? Old business, of which there isn't any. Moving on to new business and consideration of the first reading of ordinance number 2023-12, creating a museum and history board.
Uh, this is for at the Tanner Center. The museum space that we're going to have, history museum, we've called it a little bit of everything, so I figured the board could be a little bit of both. This would be, um, my thought was to, we create this board to serve the city council and the city of Newport on any matter as far as, that we'll need them the most in the creation of the museum, but also in the curation of the museum going forward. Rotating exhibits, um, sort of what we put on display. Mainly, I need a governing body to, if someone brings an old typewriter that has no historical value, that, so that it's not that I turned them down or the city council turned them down, but a group of people with historical knowledge and historical interest in cotton county could make that determination on what goes into. Because if it's a typewriter that wasn't, you know, that, that a novel wasn't written on from somebody from Newport or anything cool like it was haunted, I don't know why you would just put an old, an old item into the museum. You would want it to have a significance or a story and we would let that board determine that. Um, and, and just basically be a point of contact for Monica or Leslie or whoever that's working up there, if we had a question, to, to go through them about some part of history that somebody may ask that we're not going to know the answer to. Uh, we don't have the board, we, this is just to create it, we don't have the people yet. Uh, we've reached out to some interested parties that said they would serve on it, so I can present probably next month a list of people that we could appoint, um, a group all at once so that they're in place and we can get the museum open sooner rather than later. But, uh, this is just, I think, a useful step in, in helping me out with, you know, this new aspect, this new thing we're going to open and manage up there.
And Mayor, I'll read the captions of that into the record. It's ordinance number 2023-12, an ordinance to amend the city of Newport municipal code, an ordinance to amend the municipal code of the city of Newport Title II, boards and commissions, et cetera, adding chapter two, museum and history board.
Terry, are you okay with the language in the?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just have one question. You may have already told me this, but is this a merger between two museums, the one at the community center and Tanner?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
We have, we have that as a goal.
Yes.
Uh, that, that is our, you know, that's our ultimate goal, but we have received quite a bit of pushback from their board.
Right.
About not wanting to merge the two, not wanting to be a part of this museum, wanting to maintain their own thing. Um, you know, I, of course, we feel like it would be in the best interest of, of everybody to merge and have access to the museum, which you don't have now. They're back to making you have an, uh, an appointment to come and, you know, folks that pass through, they're not going to make an appointment to, to get, to come back tomorrow and look at the museum. It's going to be an impulse thing and, uh, you know, that needs to be accessible, you know, every day. So when somebody stops, they can also go in and, and the museum, we feel like, and what we're, the way we're going to do ours is to make it a, a tool to show what the, the history of the, of the community and to get people to want to go look at those places and experience some of those locations and see the, and see the beauty and so on.
Which is kind of, sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, it's kind of too, we've leaned into calling it the history room in case we cannot get any cooperation from the other side. We don't want it through, you know, which museum? Is, what's the history room at the Tanner Center? Just to sort of, but we're hoping that at some point it, there will be that, that cohesion that we're talking about and there'll just be one spot, one museum, one place for history. Okay. Yeah.
But as of right now, uh, and that's a good point too about not having two museums that you have to differentiate, uh, but that's, you know, we're still, you know, we're still working on that, but, uh, we've got some folks that's on that board that are just totally inflexible. We'll, we'll not even remotely discuss the possibility.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? All right, you've heard the presentation, the reading of ordinance, what's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve the consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2023-12, creating a museum and history board. We need a roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item B is consideration of resolution number 2023-04, closing a grant fund bank account at Newport Federal Bank.
Uh, Mayor, this is just, this is one of several accounts that we have to create for each, each grant project that comes along has to have its own dedicated account. And so, the, this, this project, these funds have run their course, the account is no longer active and so we just need to, to close it out and move on until we need another one and we'll create another one when we need it down the road.
Okay.
It's just a hoop you have to jump through to stay good with the, the audit and the controller.
Okay. Board, you've heard the reading of the resolution. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the board then, consideration of resolution number 2023-04, closing a grant fund bank account at Newport Federal Bank. Has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
And nays have like aye. Hearing none. Motion carries. Consideration of purchase of Birch Street.
Uh, this is the property that we've discussed on multiple occasions over at the top of the hill on Birch Street that, uh, joins the woodland park. Uh, this is the property that we intend to build our trailhead on, will be the main entrance to the woodland park because it is located, and I think about all of you have been up there, but it is located at the crest of the ridge of the property. There will be other entrances to the park, but each one of those will lead uphill. This one allows you to be on top of the hill to begin with, so this will be the main entrance to the woodland park. Uh, this property, uh, only came on the market last month and you all gave me permission at the, the last meeting to negotiate and, uh, we, we were able to come to an agreement of $90,000 to purchase it. It's officially, it's 1.33 acres, but there are two unopened streets that are on the property. And so, I have, uh, asked Randall Freeman to look at adding those two unopened streets and that will bring it up to about one and three quarters or maybe a little more, uh, maybe even closer to two acres that we will have there for the trailhead. Uh, and this money is, uh, still COVID money. Uh, you know, we used COVID money to buy the property for the woodland park and we still have enough COVID funds to cover this purchase as well. So this will not be, uh, coming out of, uh, local, local funds.
Heard the presentation, what's the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to purchase the property.
I'll say it.
All right, we have a motion on the board then, consideration of purchase of Birch Street. Birch Street at the price of $90,000, it has been properly seconded. We need a roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
I do support the project, but I am going to vote no for the price.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes.
Thank you. Four to one, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item D is consideration of the Newport Police Department to apply for the Tennessee Law Enforcement Training and Recruiting Program cost sharing.
Mr. Mayor, this is a grant that we just become aware of. We generally send our police officers to the academy at Walter State. Apparently now they're two schools behind with applicants for the academy and we reached out to the Tennessee Law Enforcement Training Academy in Donaldson. They made us aware of this $15,000 grant because we are, our financial ability to pay back is a zero because we're a distressed county. That would be a no money out, $15,000 coming in grant to pay to fully train the police officer. So we, we asked, I have sent a letter saying that we are interested so we can get on the list and we just asked for your permission to continue through this process and accept that grant if it's awarded to us.
At the 15,000, how many officers will that train?
We, we have, that's one.
Just one?
Yeah. We have, we have put in for five positions with, with our letter of notice that we think we will be trained in at least five officers in the next three years.
And it's $15,000 per officer?
It is, it's a, it's paid for their, all their education and, and then the next part's even better.
Is that eight weeks?
It's 10.
10, okay.
They go longer than the, they do up here at Walter State. They go, uh, at Walter State, they go in the evening. They have to get the same number of hours, but at the academy, they don't, they don't go to school in the evening after five. So they go an extra two weeks to get, it's like, it's 1,550 hours or it's something like that that you have to get. And they get the same hours, they just get them, they just go longer during the day. It's reasonable to be able to do it in eight weeks versus 10.
Okay. You've heard the presentation, what's the board's pleasure?
Motion approved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on board to approve consideration of Newport Police Department to apply for the Tennessee Law Enforcement Training and Recruiting Program cost sharing. It's been properly seconded. We will need a roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Item E, consideration of Newport Police Department to apply for the Tennessee Law Enforcement Recruitment and Retention Grant.
This grant is new one on us too and it comes through the Tennessee Law Enforcement Training Academy. It is, it'll pay so much a year for an officer that we recruit, like a thousand dollars a year. And then if they stay longer, then they get more money to keep, to retain them is the main thing. But that grant will come through the same funds like the, uh, our continuing education fund. The state will write a check to the city of Newport and the city of Newport will pay the officer.
Okay. Anybody, any questions? All right, we have, just a motion on the board then, well, we don't have a motion on the board. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
I'll say it.
Okay, we have a motion then to, for consideration of Newport Police Department to apply for the Tennessee Law Enforcement Recruitment and Retention Grant has been properly seconded. We do need a roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Item T, consideration of, thank you, Chief, uh, consideration of bids for a roof for the Tanner Building.
I know you guys have got the information in front of you, but, um, just for the sake of everyone here and, uh, you especially, uh, this is an insurance job, so it's not straight up our money we got about, uh, you guys got the numbers in front of you. Kathy, I'll get those for you if you want, but it's about, we have about $15,000 in insurance and the bid came in at like 17 something, so it's a difference of, what, is it less than 1,500? I can't remember off the top of my head. It's on the orange sheet. It doesn't matter.
1432.
Yeah, okay, yeah. So it's costing that much for a new roof and it's not the flat part, it's the, it's the slanted part over the oldest part of the building.
Okay. Heard the presentation, what's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion on the board for consideration of bids for the roof of the Tanner Building. Uh, insurance payment 17,268, which leaves us with a balance of 143255 for the city to pay. It has been, did we get a motion?
Yeah, we have a motion.
All right, we get a second.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We have it on the board then, uh, roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, is there something else?
You, uh, well, the citizen comment, you are, I'll just, you go, are you ready for to go to that part or?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, well, I told, I told these guys to come in, they approached me a week or two ago. A lot of people come to me with ideas, but no plan. They've actually got a plan on what to do, so I thought they could come give their elevator speech for an event they want to do that would be, uh, out back here at City Hall and on the Riverwalk. And then if, um, if you guys are interested next month, it could be an action item. So, no, because they're planning for April, they're, they're planning ahead. I'm already proud of somebody that comes in and they've got a, uh, they're planned ahead pretty well. So, uh, I'll let them do their thing during the citizen comment and then next month if we're interested in doing this and we'll make it an agenda item and vote on the, uh, to use the facility.
I want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to come down here and talk to y'all this evening. We have been very fortunate, very blessed. My name's John Marley, by the way. Uh, we have been, had access to the air, that's the, I believe it's the...
Started out as the art incubator of the Rockies, moved to Berea College for a while and is now based out of Frederick Mearns.
So we have had access to, uh, one of their workshops where they've come in and they have, uh, in conjunction with Tennessee Arts Commission, given us access to a $10,000 grant to do an event that is basically focused on local culture and bringing it together with the arts and the creative economy. So, uh, once we saw what you guys have been doing with Riverwalk over here, we had a great idea that, that you guys might want to help participate with us and, uh, allow us the use of this property to be able to basically, uh, have a one-stop shop or we'll have arts, we'll have crafts, we'll have demonstrations from local artists such as waxsmithing, canning, things of that nature, while also having physical artists find art in the mix, along with some local food vendors, food trucks, and, uh, hopefully as big of a band as we can for a plug for, uh, an artist to come down here, a larger band, and sort of pull in, uh, some of these communities that are kind of satellite to us. Not at one point in time, if you need sugar or copper, you have it down in Newport. And so you've got all these satellite communities that, uh, I think this will be a great opportunity to bring some of them in, back down to the downtown Newport area. Uh, we've got a real solid working relationship with a lot of downtown business owners. Uh, a lot of the artists are kind of, have that new art collective, go off and serve down there. And, uh, we were just, uh, kind of walking back there and thinking, well, this would just be an absolutely great spot. Uh, if you look there, we've got a map with kind of, just a kind of outline, of course, everything's heated, of how we would like to go about organizing it, have everything from storytelling up on the bridge, uh, to smaller center somewhere out there, there's little street usage, uh, right there next to the shelter, all down, uh, hopefully with y'all's approval, having access to this backstage, uh, or the old loading dock behind the building to have us a, a larger, a larger container, uh, group. Uh, but yeah, we just wanted to come down here and say, we thought this would be a great...
we thought this would be a great partnership to help kick off and bring some extra business and eyes on Newport's side. It's a lot of.
Well, for one thing, I'm glad to hear you refer to these other communities as our satellites instead of us being their satellites.
Yeah. Now, we've already got the funds. We have a financial advocate in Sweet. That's a local nonprofit that helps monitor the river over here. That's what we're expecting these to be. They're already our financial advocates. So basically, this is a payback scenario where the money's already been granted to us, but we'll just be using Sweet as our financial advocate. So everything's green lights go with the exception of location. So in the minute we can get that hammered down, we can start getting everything else going as far as sponsorships and things of that nature. However, we have done a lot of preliminary things that we would need to, I've got about four insurance loads and beginning quotes. And we've been in contact with Tidy or with the local porta potty service and things of that nature. So like I said, we're all just contingent down on location. So hope you guys would give a little consideration to it. We would love to bring some artists to downtown Newport.
Board, what do you think?
I think it's a good idea. No offense to Tim, but I've said for years the Riverwalk is not a standalone attraction. We can get different. Maybe you'd be the seed that gets that started growing. Maybe other groups would see the success that you potentially have and bring more things down there to it.
Well, funny story about this grant. This grant actually, a friend of mine got involved with the air up in Berea, Kentucky about six years ago. Now, over the course of her relationship and partnership with, of course, it's Kentucky Arts Commission up there and the Air Institute. She's been able to solidly bring world-class entertainment and artists to the downtown Berea, to that area. And now has worked it up to the point where she's got about a $95,000 budget a year. And all of that money is bringing in regional tourism. It's bringing in, you know, regional consumers that want to come down and just check out the downtown. So the overall downtown has, it was the seed that was planted that really helped grow economically Berea's downtown into what it is now. So this is hopefully not just a local one here.
Any other comments?
I thought it was good.
Yeah. Good presentation, too. As Gary said, looks well planned out.
Put a little thought to this, all right?
Presentation. And I think this, at this point, we're, I guess when, Gary, you said you were going to bring something back?
Yeah, I'll just follow you guys after the next couple of weeks. And if it's something that you might be interested in doing, we'll make it an agenda item and then have, we'll put all that stuff in the book so that it's on file for what, what sort of we're agreeing to and what they're agreeing to do. And then vote for the use of facilities next one. That'd be the best, right? That's what you agree with?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. I think Alderman Reagan has something he wants to say.
Yeah, Mayor, I was probably supposed to do this back on number seven when this is, but I'm still new. But anyway. I was really excited last time about moving the ISO to three by the fire department. And I felt like I dropped the ball a little bit because I didn't mention, you know, Tim and the Little League tournament that came in. We didn't recognize that. And it bothered me that we didn't. And if Tim, if you've got any numbers or anything that you want to let us know about, that's good, too. But we do appreciate that. I went, when I left town home one day, I saw a big crowd at the grammar school. School's not in, what's going on? Then I saw cars from other states, and it didn't make sense to me. So I just stopped and asked and found out what it was. But that was a lot of work by Tim's whole crew, not just him. And I think we, I'd like to recognize that. And another thing I just noticed, we haven't recognized that, congratulations to you, Mayor, on being put on the TML board.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
But that's what I've gotten. And I did, I ran Tim down the very next day and apologized because I felt like I dropped the ball.
Yeah, that was a nice honor from TML, but it's going to be a lot more work, too, so.
It pays.
They keep encouraging me to learn to say no at some point. Maybe I will. But in any case, thank you very much. Are there any other comments from our citizens? Tim?
Andy, thank you very much for that. You know, our numbers were big. We had eight teams from across the state that participated in that state tournament here. And of course, we made a few mistakes the first opening day as rehearsal for Saturday, which was also a big day, too. But we found some things out that we need to address. And that's our restroom facilities. And Mr. Fincham has given us the lot to get, prepare some numbers and see what it's going to take to help us make sure that our restrooms can accommodate 500 people or more at a time. And of course, we found out twice this year that we're not where we need to be, but we're going to get there. So Newport Utilities, with the money that you all put up front for E1 pumps and air compression that goes into water lines will help us be able to meet that goal so that we don't run those problems again. We need the people like these artists right here to get involved in our program with Parks and Rec. We have Akil, we have pottery, we have easels. We're all about trying to get instructors to come into our community, at the community center, to start our arts program, which is a vision that we had as a director and of course, as our city administrator to advance our program along with the museum ideas. So there's a, there's a lot of things going on in Parks and Rec. Just like we're trying to finalize our arrangements for Labor Day weekend, you know. So hopefully, within the next two months, we'll present at our department head meeting a, to Mr. Fincham, what our Labor Day weekend's going to be like so that we can blow out our last Saturday of the summer. We may have the mayor's swim day that you bring a can of food and you get in free. Then that way, we can make some things happen with those food supplies. Also this weekend, Gary mentioned something, and I'm taking a lot of time. Gary mentioned the survey room. There is two surveys that will be out this weekend. It's your smartphone. You can take a picture of the Q and R. It takes you to a survey. There'll be one there for Wado, and there'll be one there for the overall master plan that we're doing for the city and Parks and Rec. So Gary's working with Lowe's to make sure that we got everything, Lowe's design, not Lowe's. So that making sure that we're ready to go this weekend because that's why the mayor is so stressed out. I'm quite sure without the Tennessee picnic it's all week, including Saturday and Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
I've got a solution to your bathroom problem. You live close there, so just have everybody go to your house. Don't flush.
I think I'm letting this meeting get out of hand, so. Any other comments from citizens? Anyone wish to be heard? We hear none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'm going to adjourn.
We are adjourned.